You're good, whatever your rings.
All right, well, let's call to order the Spark City Council meeting of four twenty-six twenty-one with a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell, here, Anderson.
Here.
Maybe.
Hi, here.
There.
Here.
Acting City Attorney Duncan.
Here.
The manager recruits.
Here.
You have a quorum, thank you.
All right, let's go to opening ceremonies with our invocation speaker, Lead Pastor Mark South, Living Stones Church.
Looking, I do not show him in the call, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, we're lucky we have a pastor on our city council who's always willing to give us a prayer at a moment's notice. Mr. Dare.
Honored to. Lord, we come to you and we thank you for today. We pray for all the different things that are happening around our country. We pray that in our city, that with our police, our fire, with each of the conversations we're having, that are happening around COVID, give us wisdom and help us make great decisions here today. We thank you for all the blessings in our city. Amen.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Pledge of Allegiance, you know, Mr. Duncan, we'll have you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, happy to. Just put your hands over your heart and we'll begin in one, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk, let's move on to item four, public comment. I'm pretty sure we have some today.
All right, I'm going to begin with our opening announcement. Good afternoon and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, the Spark City Council meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until further notice. The safety of Sparks residents, employees, and elected officials are important to us, and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. The city of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings, and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. The city of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to these or any other factors. For those watching and listening from home, general public comment will be announced for items four and twelve point one. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number or join via the meeting link provided on the city council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. All participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, press star nine from your telephone or utilize the raise your hand feature on your computer or tablet when prompted. You will be called upon to speak one at a time by the name or telephone number you are calling from. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called on to speak for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will have three minutes. Please remember, any comments or questions cannot be addressed or answered by the council if the topics have not been agendized. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. And at this time, if you would like to participate in public comment, please press star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app.
All right, are you showing any public comment, Madam Clerk?
I'm showing them, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let me get, I'll give you thirty more seconds and I was expecting at least one today. Okay, all right, well, let's move on then to item five, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion.
We're moved.
Got a first by Councilman Dare, second by Councilman Abbott. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Item six point one, approval of the minutes for April twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Councilwoman Bybee, second.
I move to approve the minutes of the Spark City Council meeting for April twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Second by Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Most carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, let's start off with announcements, presentations, item seven, announcements, presentations, recognition items, and items of special interest. Item seven point one, commendation Sparks High School Soccer Team. Councilman Abbott, did you go to school there?
Yeah, I might have did a year or two.
You still go to school there?
I think I spend more time than some of the students do Sundays, but definitely a proud railroader. And I think we got Chava, um, you want to bring him over?
Councilman Abbott, I, I do not see him under the names cited, do you?
He's under, I think, Alasovich, so it'd be Aralasovich, which is the assistant principal at Sparks High.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I know he was coming, I talked to him like ten minutes ago.
Sorry, Don, that's not me.
Oh, oh.
Looking for the same thing you are.
My bad, Alasovich. Murdoch, I think it's Murdoch, he has his hand up, who's also at Sparks High School. I know he's going to have some of the players, so.
All right, we got him over, let's see.
All right, you could begin your reading there, Councilman Abbott.
I will start now. So, whereas the Sparks High School Boys varsity soccer team, led by Coach Jose Chava España, are your twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Northern Nevada five A regional champions. And whereas this is the first year the railroaders competed in the five A division after advancing to the league last year. And this year, whereas this year's team is unique because its entire coaching staff is made up, made up of past Sparks High School railroader alumni, which set a new precedent for the team, driving home the message of once a railroader, always a railroader. And whereas this is the twelfth consecutive year, the team is qualified for the state championship. Although due to, due to the pandemic, there will be no game this year. And whereas this season, the railroaders scored thirty-four goals while their opponents scored just seventeen. And the railroaders won three of four champion, championships they attended. And whereas Omar Hernandez Amia was named midfielder of the year, and Alejandro Alejillo was named defender of the year, the Sparks High School coaching staff was naming the, was named the coaching staff of the year for the five A league, and nine out of the twenty railroaders were selected under the all-league and all-state categories. And now therefore, on behalf of Ed Lawson, Mayor of City of, City of Sparks, do hereby join with the city council in commending the Sparks High School Boys varsity soccer team for winning the Northern Nevada, Nevada five A regional championship this year. I think Chava's here with, yes. And I believe Chava's here with some of his coaches, and I see some players, and the floor is yours, Chava.
First and foremost, we just want to say thank you, you know, super proud of these boys. It takes a village to do what we do, and as you can see, we do have our admin here as well. So, you know, like I said, we have the full support of, of everybody at Sparks behind us. And these young men, they committed to everything that COVID presented itself as a challenge. And, you know, we had to petition to be in the five A, you know, and we were fortunate enough that that was something that was granted to us and was spearheaded by Bill Harrison, our A.D. And we just wanted to come out and, and show everybody what we could do, and I think these boys really bit into that. The biggest thing I told these seniors is set the tone for what we want to be in the five A, and I think they've done just that, so. But we appreciate the city of Sparks, Donald, you know, we appreciate you for the recognition, and we're very thankful to just be able to be here and be receiving such a, a nice combination from you guys, so thank you.
And then, I don't know that the regular public knows that being in a five A championship is a big deal for a very small school that Sparks High is. I mean, that's, that's a wonderful, wonderful accomplishment. I congratulate you guys on that, that's just an amazing feat to be in that, that kind of company and play that well. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments from the council? Thank you, guys. Great job. Very well done.
I think Christopher has one.
Did you have something, Christopher?
I was just going to say to the coaches, I know that these students definitely stepped up and did all that, but I'll tell you what, during this time, I know it's hard also for those coaches and everybody to keep, keep everybody on track and keep them pointing in the right direction. Good job. Very important.
Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to item seven point two, Arbor Day, Councilwoman Vanderwell. No, the wrong, I got the wrong one, Christopher.
Yeah.
I got you mixed up, sorry.
It's all good, I'll take that one. So, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce erosion of precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat, habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the city of Sparks is recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, now therefore, Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, does hereby proclaim April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one as Arbor Day, and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Let's plant a tree.
Okay, I don't believe we have anyone here for that one. Okay. All right, let's move on to Travel and Tourism Week, and I believe we have Mr. Ben McDonald from the R C V A here, Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas America's annual salute to travel and tourism was established by congressional resolution in nineteen eighty-three, specifying the first full week in May is National Travel and Tourism Week. And whereas millions of travelers visit Northern Nevada each year, and travel and tourism support more than forty thousand jobs within hundreds of local businesses in Northern Nevada. And whereas last year, the coronavirus pandemic devastated every sector of the travel industry, affecting every community in the country, and especially in the state of Nevada. And whereas the rebound of the travel and tourism industry will drive the rebuilding of the U.S. economy and American workforce. And whereas this year's theme, Power of Travel, recognizes the industry's role in bringing back our vibrant, vibrant communities, restoring the U.S. economy, rebuilding our workforce, and reconnecting America. And whereas the power of travel will revive the city of Sparks, the state of Nevada, and the United States, driving us forward to a more prosperous future. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Ed Lawson, Mayor Sparks, we hereby proclaim May second through eighth at twenty twenty-one as Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Sparks, and ask all citizens to join us in this observation.
Job. All right.
Mr. McDonald, do you want to say anything?
All right, thank you so much. So, on behalf of the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority, and personally as a Sparks resident, I'd like to convey our appreciation of the city of Sparks and the Spark City Council for your recognition of Travel and Tourism Week officially running next week, May second through the eighth. The Northern Nevada tourism industry has a direct impact on roughly forty thousand jobs and countless businesses throughout this destination. Tourism has been a consistent driving force in our economy, and with former R C V A board members like Mayor Lawson and our current board, which includes Councilwoman Bybee, the city of Sparks has been a great partner in the R C V A's effort to improve the quality of life for Northern Nevadans by improving the guest experience for visitors to our area. We look forward to the next decade of this partnership, and also to next week, as we recognize Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Sparks and throughout this destination. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ben. We appreciate it. And good luck. I know it, it's tough sledding right now, but you guys are doing a great job over there at the R C V A under Charles Harris's leadership. And keep up the good work.
We'll do that. Hope is on the horizon. I appreciate you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item seven point four, Youth Law Awareness Day. Now is Ms. Vanderwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas, May first is celebrated as National Law Day across the United States of America, and this year's theme being the rule of law. And whereas, the city of Sparks is committed to the rule of law, the safety of our community, and the excellence and achievement of the youth in our community. And whereas, Project R E A L, REAL, a nonprofit serving the people of Nevada, has used the month of April to lead a statewide initiative promoting young Nevadans' awareness of law and the consequences of breaking them. And whereas, on this occasion, our city asks all capable adults to instruct any young people in their lives on the importance of thinking within the context of the law, and to help them understand that ignorance of the law is not an accepted legal defense for breaking it. And whereas, these conversations will make a notable contribution to safety throughout our community. Now, therefore, I, Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May first, twenty twenty-one, as Youth Law Awareness Day.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody here for this item?
We do not, Mr. Oh.
Wes?
I was not aware that anybody would be here, but I do have a hand raised, I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, let's see.
Mike Kramer, are you here to accept the Youth Law Awareness Day?
I am, and I just wanted to thank you all for this. We are only serving four schools in Sparks right now, but hopefully this and some other steps are taken will help us provide all of our free resources to all of the schools in your community for the remainder of this school year and definitely with the next one coming. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes, Mr. Dare.
I just wanted to ask Mike if he could send us more information on what he does. I'd like, I'm interested in seeing how he's helping the youth learn this and be a part of this.
Yeah, I would be happy to. We, I, I can tell you right now, the campaign website, we're going to leave it up all summer, the initiative, and all it is, is a free talking guide that parents can use to talk to their kids. It's projectrealnv.org slash nvreturnready, and I will email you a link, so you don't have to remember that.
Would you do us a favor and send that to the city clerk, please?
I will, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, once again, thank you for what you do.
Thank you again.
All right, item seven point five, presentation on the new Proctor H. Hug, Proctor R. High School at Wild Creek. And we have Adam Cersei with us today. Adam, take it away.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Adam Cersei. I'm the chief of facilities for the Washoe County School District. Pleased to be here. I've got a very brief presentation to update the council on the status of the new high school being built, Proctor R. Hug High School at Wild Creek. I'll go through this fairly briskly, and feel free to interject with any questions or comments as you see fit. So, just a little bit of a background, as most of you are well aware, this project began even before twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, but really during that period, there was tremendous planning and design and public discussion about this project, really culminating for the purposes of, of this presentation in twenty nineteen with an extensive development agreement between the school district and the city of Sparks. And through that development agreement, we were able to assure the public and all parties involved of a variety of technical requirements, including an annual update to the council regarding the progress. So, that's in part why I'm here today. We'll go through some of the status of construction throughout this presentation and give an update, but this already is our second annual update on the project since the execution of the development agreement in May twenty nineteen. So, that's just a little bit of a background. This is some of the ground that we're going to cover here in this brief presentation. Obviously, a tremendous project, great progress to date, and very much on our way to an on-time completion in fall of twenty twenty-two. But it all started back in late twenty nineteen from a construction standpoint. Many of you will recall the relocation of the ore ditch, which originally had traversed through the northern reaches of the golf course, and is now rerouted through an inverted siphon. You can see the three large culverts going down and back up, perpetuating the ore ditch. That was completed December through March of twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Also, around that time, you may recall major power line transmission relocation, which also went across the northern limits of the previous Wild Creek Golf Course, relocated further to the north to make ready for the school. On this next slide, we look at a little bit of before and after from a mass grading standpoint. Once we got the utilities out of the way in twenty twenty, about the time we last spoke about this, we began major mass grading activities throughout the summer of twenty twenty, filling in some of those ponds that used to be up there, and really moving hundreds of thousands of dirt throughout the spring and midsummer twenty twenty. You know, I chose a couple of images here. We've got, of course, a number of utilities, noteworthy, storm drain, infrastructure, trans, transferring a hundred-year storm event through the site, through culverts, through the site, into a detention basin on the downstream end of the site, and then ultimately into an onsite pond. We've got effluent irrigation plumbed into the site to continue to serve that area with treated effluent from the city of Sparks. But the images you see here are representative of the work that was completed for the ground source heat pump or well field. This building and all of our new schools are heated and cooled primarily by basically passive exchange of heat or extraction of heat from the ambient ground temperature. And so, in the upper right-hand corner, you see the beginnings of the well field where they were actually drilling some four hundred and fifty separate wells, which would then be basically threaded with closed-loop system where fluid would go down the well, exchange heat with the ground, and then flow back into the building to regulate the temperature of the building, the air in the building. So, an awful lot of intricate site utilities that has taken place throughout fall of twenty twenty and into twenty twenty-one. The next slide is just a magnificent photo. We take progress photos daily and drone footage weekly of the site. Many of you probably saw that large crane in progress. This image taken only just a few months ago, November twenty twenty, shows the real skeleton of what is a three-story, ultimately three hundred thousand, nearly three hundred thousand square foot building, including the gymnasiums and whatnot being, being built in the foreground out of masonry. So, really, a tremendous building. This phase of the project is nearly fifty percent complete right now. There's drywall being hung on the first floor and roof being completed on the top decks of all of the buildings. So, really, going very well out there in the field, some three hundred workers currently daily onsite, really a, a hub of activity taking place on all really building aspects of the project right now. So, this next slide is maybe some of the most impactful to the community. Before we talk about the actual scope of the work, I wanted to really draw attention to the community conversation and effort that went into developing the scope. So, this is the off-site improvements really intended to mitigate the impacts of putting a high school in an existing neighborhood. Much discussion about the traffic impacts, the pedestrian, the, the safety, all of the above, and quite a bit of thought to mitigating those impacts before day one. This also was not just developed by the school district and our consultant team, but reviewed in this instance by Washoe County, NDOT, as well as the city of Sparks, and memorialized in that development agreement. So, we feel really positive about the, the entire scope that's involved here, but bringing that to life is what's going to happen throughout twenty twenty-one. And we've worked very closely with staff at the city of Sparks to permit this and to communicate it to the public in advance of any impacts, just like any road construction project. This is really where it's going to hit the average citizen who may or may not be paying attention to the project when it's off in the distance, but when it affects their commute, we want them to know in advance and to help be safe for them and the workers. The situation we find ourselves in with El Rancho being an excellent detour route, we have been able to work with the city of Sparks staff to close Sullivan Lane there, the portion you see kind of in red, just to the north of the entrance to Wild Creek Golf Course. And so, that portion up to El Rancho Drive is currently closed to through traffic, and they're actively working on reconstructing that road, as well as work that will take place later this summer on El Rancho under traffic control conditions. The work in NDOT right-of-way on McCarran, we're modifying those traffic signals, extending turn pockets, et cetera. That will all be done during night work conditions. And we've got, so just talking specifically about the scope, aside from a turn pocket here or a traffic signal there, we've got new roundabouts at El Rancho and Sullivan Lane, and then two entrance points to the school campus. So, basically, where if you can see my cursor, equally spaced off of Sullivan Lane, full ingress egress coming from the north into the campus or coming from the south into the campus, there'll be two roundabouts. Safety improvements, school zone on Sullivan Lane, and thousands of feet of new sidewalk going from Sun Valley Boulevard all the way down to McCarran and, and then beyond McCarran and Sullivan. So, this work is underway as we speak and anticipated to be completed before winter, you know, late fall twenty twenty-one. So, that's really the highlights of the status of the project. We're very much on schedule, and I'm personally very pleased to report kind of the culture of safety and really just the positivity that I, I can attest many associated with the project are feeling. They, they understand how big of an impact this will be to our community, and they're really proud to be a part of it. This was exemplified by the ceremony. This image was taken back in February, sort of a construction milestone ceremony put on by our contracting team to celebrate the work that's been completed to date. A lot more work to go, but we're really moving along at a great pace. Anticipate, you know, substantial completion in just over a year from today, followed by a really exciting furniture move-in period, where we'll be moving, of course, a lot of stuff from the current Hug High School into the new Hug High School, and a significant amount of new furniture and equipment into the school next summer, ready for first day of school on August twenty twenty-two. So, those are the highlights. That's all I have. Appreciate any questions or discussion. Thank you.
Questions from the council? Adam, I think you had to quit sharing your screen so I could see my council. There you go. Thank you. Questions from the council, Mr. Anderson, then Ms. Bybee.
Mr. Cersei, great to see you, and thank you for the presentation. I appreciate you talking about the roadway and, and the sidewalks, those kind of things. Those, those have actually been a couple of the biggest concerns that I've heard from, from people in the neighborhood and their students going there, want to make sure they're going to be safe. But could you tell us some of the other things that you guys have done to protect the neighborhood as far as things like lighting and, and such that are making less of an impact of going from a golf course to a school?
Sure, you know, really, it starts from the beginning, design where the building itself is set back to the rear of campus. It might seem like a small thing, but opposed to most, as opposed to most other high schools, that building is closest to the frontage road as possible, and the facilities are in the back of house. I think that will have a net to the frontage road as possible and the facilities are in the back of house. I think that will have a net positive impact on the community. We're pleased to see the county perpetuation of public golf in that area. So I think that will be a very kind of complimentary neighborhood resource. We do, of course, have the traditional high school outdoor curriculum, so tennis courts, basketball courts, baseball, softball, soccer fields. But notably, the high school football stadium with the lights, we have really state of the art football stadium lights, which are very focused directed onto the field itself. We had to do an extensive lighting study, not only for the neighborhood and the project, but also for the FAA and the Reno Tahoe Airport was concerned of any distraction from those types of events. And I think those are what might be the highlights and then just again, working with the architects and the entire design team to landscape it appropriately and really blend it into the to the existing terrain, tuck it back up into that topography as as best as possible.
Well, we appreciate everything you guys have done and likewise, the engagement with the public, making sure that you're addressing as many of those concerns as you can. Thank you.
Okay, Miss Bybee.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam, welcome to the City of Sparks and of course Councilman Anderson and I have the pleasure of being on the Capitol Funding Protection Committee. So we kind of get what we do. We get all the updates and all the transparency of all of the schools. And obviously, this has been one of the biggest being built right now, and it's exciting to see the progress that's been made and beyond time, the just all the the details that the school district and you and your team and our construction team has gone through is much appreciated. Can you, for the benefit of the public, let us know what your, what the school capacity is built for? And then what you anticipate the student enrollment to be when it opens in two thousand and twenty-two? Thank you.
Sure, the the rated capacity, the max capacity is, I believe, just under twenty-two, twenty-three hundred students. I have to double check that while we're on the call, but it's right in that twenty-three, twenty-four hundred student maximum range. Right now, we have forecasted for just under twenty-two hundred students. And this is unique where we're taking the entirety of Sun Valley, the entirety of the existing Proctor Hug High School zoning and putting them in this new school, really to relieving Spanish Springs High School primarily, and then, of course, vacating the existing Hug High School for a comprehensive remodel project there. So probably just south of twenty-two hundred students, somewhere in the eighty-five percent of capacity range based on what we're designed for.
Okay, and then I guess a follow up question to that. So the students at the current Hug High School will transfer over to this new campus when the remodel, the Debbie Smith Campus is opened. That is open district wide, and so students that are at the new Hug or any other high school will be eligible to apply to attend the new technical school. Is that correct?
That's right. The the Debbie Smith Career and Technical High School at the current Hug Campus is an open enrollment scenario similar to AACT. So we'll be drawing students from all across the district at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, Adam, thank you. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item seven point six. Presentation on the Washoe County COVID nineteen Regional Information Center pandemic outreach. And I think Ms. Julie Duel has this one for us.
I do. Can you hear me okay?
Can hear you, can't see you.
Let me turn on my camera. That'll help.
There you go. We wanted to see your smiling face.
Hold on, it's not wanting to go on. There it goes. Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and City Council members. For the record, I'm Julie Duel, your Community Relations Manager. And I come before you this morning to recap our regional efforts to communicate important COVID nineteen related information in our communities. Since March of two thousand and twenty, I've had the amazing privilege of working alongside of some of the most amazing communicators in our region. And we formed the Washoe COVID nineteen Regional Information Center. Later, I'll introduce you to a few of my partners, but right now I'd like to share my screen with you. Okay, can you see that?
Yes, we can see that.
Okay, good, good. Okay, so the Joint Information Center was initiated, move something out of the way here, okay? Was initiated on a low level back about a prior month before COVID nineteen hit in our community about February of two thousand and twenty. And by March of two thousand and twenty, when Washoe County reported its first case, we had fully activated the Joint Information Center. And although it's still part of the JIC, we rebranded as the Regional Information Center or RIC. So that's what where you hear RIC from. And from the beginning, our main goal was really to distribute just relevant COVID nineteen information to the community. And we really wanted to let people know the important information about the pandemic in both English and Spanish. And while the health district, City of Reno, City of Sparks and Washoe County are our primary RIC members, there are twenty-two other regional stakeholders who's who we speak with weekly continually, and they've just been great partners for us. And the RIC has accomplished so much. One of our first tasks was to start a regional website, covidnineteenwashoe.com. And this site has a tremendous amount of useful information, which includes a dashboard, and we have twenty-one million page views so far. And we're proud to be the first county in the state to fully embrace virtual press conferences. So far, we've held ninety-four of them. And these are all posted on our website. And additionally, all at the beginning of the pandemic, we also hosted a series of informative town halls. The JIC has been on call every single day since March two thousand and twenty, and to date has distributed more than four hundred sixty media releases. Every single release has been translated into Spanish and sent to Spanish media members. We've archived all of the briefings and they're on our website in both English and Spanish, and we've also sent releases out via Twitter and Facebook. And speaking of social media, it has been a huge lift. We started a brand new Twitter account, also in March of two thousand and twenty, that promoted our regional messaging. And we have five point five million impressions so far, and that's amazing for a brand new account, and we're all still managing our own social media channels as well. We discovered there was ways that we, other ways we needed to communicate to people. And so in addition to the daily updates, we decided to take control of the narrative and send out information straight to residents through a weekly newsletter. And in a matter of months, subscribers have gone for our newsletter from five thousand to thirty thousand. And since the beginning, as I kind of mentioned before, Spanish outreach has been a huge part of our strategy. Vet Contreras has been a fantastic coordinator for Hispanic outreach for us, and we're very grateful to her. She took time to create the covidnineteenwashoe.com/espanol from scratch to cater to the Hispanic community. And the City of Sparks also started a City of Sparks and Espanol Facebook site, and I'm very thankful to Red Strategies for helping me share content on this important social media platform. So you may be aware, I'm sure, of our Mask On Move On campaign. It's a huge bright spot in our communication strategy. We worked with two PR firms, KPS Three and BBK, to kick off this pro mask, safety based content campaign. It launched at the perfect time when we were seeing a surge in cases. There were several other mass campaigns running throughout the state, but none of them had the focus in Spanish, Spanish to the Hispanic community. And in addition, you'll see our Mask On Move On campaign, and we also have it in Spanish, and we're proud to say that we've distributed more than ten thousand masks into the community. You may see people wearing them all the time. And for those not familiar, I'd really like to share a brief video that of the campaign.
Breaking news, there is a new positive case of COVID nineteen, this time in Washoe County.
Avoid large crowds, shop online and support local businesses.
Without community, we're nothing here. We're all in this together.
Remember local, remember us.
The easiest way to be a superhero is putting a mask on.
Cases, hospitalizations, all going down.
Next tonight, the coronavirus and cases falling while restrictions are being lifted.
So I hope you enjoyed that. KPS Three did that video for us. They did a great job, and this campaign has really shifted the behavior of residents in Washoe County and did it in a voice that wasn't just from government communicators, and that was really our goal. The campaign was funded with CARES Act dollars, and we also received a match from the state. The campaign pivoted in December to focus more on vaccine messaging. The covidnineteenwashoe.com website still exists, and we also added the covidnineteenwashovaccine.com with a great dashboard, and it has a lot of information on how to get vaccines. We've also held several community town halls and partnered with community leaders to share the message. So the end result really is a great achievement and a byproduct of the largest and longest regional communications response in the history of the county. So the JIC continues to meet weekly to discuss pandemic response, and what's truly been remarkable is working with the core members of this this Joint Information Center, Regional Information Center. And I'd love to introduce them now. I'm very proud to work with this great team. I'll pass it to Rebecca Venus from the City of Reno, then Scott Oxerart from Washoe County Health District and Nancy Lewin Hagan from Washoe County.
Thank you, Julie. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and Sparks City Council. I'm Rebecca Venus, Director of Neighborhood Services from the City of Reno, for the record. And I just wanted to express my gratitude to the members of the Regional Information Center. Their tireless efforts this past year have kept our community safe and informed. What began as a standard incident response tool has really turned out to be a strategic partnership unlike anything we've seen in this state before. Normally at the city, I have a four person team in communications, and during the pandemic, that combined with our regular business and the things we at the city had to communicate would have been nearly impossible for us to do with just our own team. And by having this extended team, we will be able to able to quickly provide critical information in both English and Spanish in our community from day one. The collaboration has really made communications in our community better than we would have seen had we been individually working, and this team continues to be an innovator and a leader when communicating about COVID in the state. So I look forward to continuing this partnership for future topics that are of regional concern, and thank you for giving us some time today to be able to talk to you about it.
Hi, hi, everybody. Mayor Lawson, council members. My name is Scott Oxerart. I'm the Communications Manager with the Washoe County Health District. Thank you for your time today. Just a couple of things I wanted to add was specifically to Julie Duel. She's been absolutely essential in this operation. There were, as you've seen, if you followed us on any of our social channels, we had a lot of videos and and many of them required a really quick turnaround because we were trying to get it to residents as soon as possible. And Julie really stepped up in that regard, and I just want to thank her publicly for that. And then finally, I'm just proud of this team and what Rebecca was saying. I just felt privileged to be a part of it. I think we've just done a really good job working together. We just haven't seen that in the past. You know, there's all kinds of different issues that come up, but this team really worked together to get through that, and I'm excited just for the future and how these partnerships can be leveraged for the benefit of people in Sparks and those all around in Washoe County. So thank you for your time.
Mayor Lawson and Council, I'm Nancy Lewin Hagan. For the record, Director of Communications here at Washoe County. I echo everything that everyone said, and what I'd like to add is we continue to meet with vaccination messaging and rollout two times a week up until even last Thursday, we're changing and and moving, as you know, as messaging does in this entire arena, and we don't, we don't have any plans of not meeting and collaborating, and that's really what I look forward to the most as well. This team is absolutely amazing. We know there's going to be an end to this emergency, and this emergency declaration doesn't feel like it. But we know there will be, but I can assure you that this group of people will continue to work to outreach on homelessness and the next wildfire, or the next flood, or whatever comes our way. I'm really, really proud to work with all of these people, and I'm very proud to be in front of you today. Thank you.
And I really echo that too, and I can just simply say that having this amazing collaboration with my regional partners has just been a blessing so much. I can't even tell you. I would not have been able to keep my head above water without this team. So they've been great, and our next steps really are to continue vaccination messaging, to continue the importance of being tested if you need to be tested, just making sure that we continue our regional efforts together. And as my team said, one of the greatest things is we'll be able to, if if there is emergencies down the road, this team is in place. And we're very, very thankful and very grateful. So thank you, team, for being on this call, and we're here to answer any questions.
Question from the council. Miss Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank all of you for the twenty-four seven work that you've been doing for over a year. I mean, COVID doesn't go away, the messaging doesn't go away. So many things throughout this whole pandemic, we've all have to had to just we have to keep shifting. We have to, it's a fluid situation that's never happened before. So the challenges for all of us, for our residents, for us as leaders, for communicating, is more critical than ever. And what's exciting to me, and I think it's kind of the attitude that we have taken with your team, and I think with the region, the three municipalities, Reno, Washoe County and Sparks, we have to be working together because we don't want a different message in one of our jurisdictions, whether it's the messaging itself or whether it's the compliance and what the rules are, and to be really clear and make sure that people know what the rules are, what the where you can get a vaccine, what businesses need to do. We can't have it different in Reno than in Sparks. It has to be the same as a region, and I think we always talk about regional communication and collaboration, from regional planning to, you know, RTC, I mean, all of those things, but I think this is really even highlighted more the importance of that collaboration as a region for the benefit of everyone, and I want to thank all of you for the amazing work, and I agree, this type of collaboration should continue in in really everything we do. Thank you so much.
Mr. Dare.
Yeah, I think it's one of the things when you see stuff like this happen, people say, of course, we should do that. But one of the things we know, because if you look around, even in our own state at times, or it's definitely other cities as well. Not all regions do what we do coming together, especially with communication. And we've actually seen some pretty crazy things happen in regions because they did not work together with different messaging and things. So good job, and and I think for our citizens to think, well, that's just what everyone does. It's not what everyone does. And I think it's important people realize that this is actually an incredible job, and it is beyond what normal, what we see as a regular base. So good job. Thank you.
Well, for me too, thank you very much for what you guys have done. I know you worked hard, and I know Julie's worked hard. We We, me and Neil were commenting the other day, she's like having five employees. It's amazing how she just goes like a tornado. So congratulations to all you guys. Thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you very, very much.
All right. All right, let's move on to item seven point seven. Board and Commission Vacancy Announcements Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, Mr. Cruz.
Afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of the council. For the record, Neil Cruz, your city manager, here to announce a single vacancy to fill a partial term on our Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. The partial term will run through November first of 2021. Applicants must have a background in performing arts and be a resident of Washoe County. Applications will be accepted through 5:00 PM this Friday, April 30th, 2021. Applications are easiest to get to through the city's website and that's www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved. Once you're there, click on volunteering for a Sparks Board Commissioner Committee, fill out the form and press submit. Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Thank you. All right, moving on to consent items. Anyone wishing to pull a consent item? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott.
Move to approve the consent items.
Second, Vanderwell.
Hey, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Imposed? Most carries unanimously. Okay, general business nine point one, presentation discussion of possible approval of the mayor's appointment to the Sparks Civil Service Commission for a partial term ending June 30th, 2023, from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Pamela Baker, Cynthia Sparza and Jenna Garcia. Who is going to handle this one? Is it me? Neil's going to handle this.
Well, it's mine to handle, but I would, all I would offer is, is for you to announce your choice and ask for council ratification.
And you know what? I probably should have looked that up, but I forgot who I recommended. I apologize. And the myriad of other things I do every day.
Then what I would propose is that we continue this item to our next meeting and we can consider it that.
Yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, but I'm just drawing a blank and I don't have anything in front of me. It's, it's at the city and not at my house.
Understood.
I apologize. That's my fault for not being prepared. Okay, nine point two. Yes.
I was just online, it says Jenna Garcia, but I don't know if that's you or.
I have to verify because like I said, I I'm amongst the many things that I do every day that that one escapes me of who I picked, but I believe that's correct. But we'll.
Mr. Mayor.
It happened, yes.
Mr. Mayor, this is Julie. You did give me that name, sir.
Okay, Jenna Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, perfect. So let's, let's go ahead then and instead of continuing, Neil, can we just go ahead and vote on it now? Is any problem?
No, there's no problem there at all, sir. It is your call.
Okay, so it's Jenna Garcia is who I'm recommending. So I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Got a motion from Councilwoman Vanderwell. I got a second from Councilman Abbott. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Imposed? All right, most carries unanimously. And once again, I apologize, Jenna, I truly apologize to you for, for not remembering that. That's pretty bad. Nine point two, consideration discussion of possible input on the Regional Transportation Commission Sparks Boulevard Project. And I see we have Amber Sosa here.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm Amber Sosa, your Transportation Manager. And I am here today with the honor to introduce you to Jeff Wilbrecht. He is a project manager from the Regional Transportation Commission. He is heading up the charge on the Sparks Boulevard Project. And he's here with a presentation to show you the status of the project and where they're going to. With that, I will turn it over to you, Jeff.
Yeah, great. Thank you, everybody. Jeff Wilbrecht, for the record, Mayor Lawson and Council, thanks for having me on your meeting today. And I will share my screen. You guys all see that?
Yes.
Great. So yeah, the Sparks Boulevard Project, I'm here to provide a quick update for you guys. Just to kind of recap a couple of the items I'm going to be talking about during this presentation. Just kind of review the purpose and need of the project. We've done a lot of work thus far and kind of come up with several different alternatives that really fit that purpose and need. With that, we've come up with some phasing that I'll review and some estimated construction costs and then kind of wrap it up with the schedule. So again, if you have any questions or have any comments throughout the presentation, I'm a flexible person. So just please interrupt and we can talk through them. So to kind of recap the project as it's been currently packaged, it really was derived from a corridor study that RTC performed, I think back in the 2013 to 2015 timeframe. And from that, we identified some needs following where the southeast connector stops near the Truckee River and Greg Street up to the north by Reed High School. And so this section of Sparks Boulevard is under consideration with this project. And the main purpose of the project was to address operational capacity deficiencies and then really improve connectivity, safety and mobility for all transportations. You know, cars, pedestrians, transit, bicycles along this segment of the project. You know, as many of you are aware, Spanish Springs and Northern Sparks area is really continuing to grow. And that just puts continued stress on our transit or transportation infrastructure. And so this project will try to address that as it advances. There's also several areas that lack, you know, ADA connectivity or even multimodal connectivity. And so those are kind of a couple of highlighted areas on the orange dots on this map. And lastly, before I get too further along, a lot of my maps all have north on the right hand side of our screen. And so I'll be talking kind of in that context. I'll be starting kind of on the left side of the screen near Greg Street and then ending up at Bering. So just kind of keep in mind as I, as I go through this, we're going to be going kind of from south to north in that general kind of configuration. So this is kind of the start of our preferred alternatives. And so as you may be aware to, you know, increase capacity, we need to add lanes. And so the majority of this facility in this section is two lanes in each direction. And so we're looking to add a third lane in each direction. So starting down here, this is the end of the southeast connector, the northern limits, where it kind of comes into Greg Street. In the southbound direction, there's actually three lanes already. In the northbound direction, there's a third lane, but it discharges onto Greg Street. So the project really starts kind of at the, where the southeast connector stops. In this segment, we've identified that we can achieve the three lanes in each direction within more or less the same footprint of the roadway. However, that's going to require some minor modifications to the turns at this Greg Street intersection as well as restriping. And then whenever we go in and do a project like this, we really want to make sure that we're rehabilitating the pavement as much as possible to really ensure the life of the pavement. So it's a smooth surface for those travelers. The next segment that I want to kind of talk about is the I-80 kind of section of the project. And this area is really similar to that last segment. So as we continue northward, you know, there's two lanes in each directions as we enter I-80. There's three lanes of traffic that exit eastbound off ramp and go south or sorry, north on the Sparks Boulevard, on the overpass up towards Legends. So that's going to stay the same. We don't really have to do too much there, but we do need to restripe the area. So we're going to be adding an additional southbound lane in this, you know, provide that continuity of three lanes in each direction. Continuing northward a little bit. This is where kind of the, the project really starts to increase in its impacts. And so north of the westbound ramps, we really need to do a lot more work to achieve that three lanes in each direction. So if you are familiar with this area, there actually is three lanes in the southbound direction, but one of those lanes ends up being a drop lane is what we call it, that goes onto the westbound ramps of I-80. And then there still is those three lanes of traffic, but the third lane is actually the drop lane into this area that goes to the Wild Island Adventure Park. And I think the backseat house that is there. And so there's going to be some widening that goes on in this area to achieve the continuity of three lanes through this Lincoln Way intersection.
And Jeff, can I ask you a quick question? Will you go back on that?
Yeah.
That, one of the things that I get complaints on, not all the time, but quite often, is that size of the median where the three lanes go into Legends.
Yeah, you're talking about this one right here?
Yeah, it's literally like a chicane in a road race.
Yeah, yeah.
There, is there an improvement coming to that?
Yeah, we've talked about this a lot. We are still kind of in this preliminary design stage, but there's a couple of different ideas that we have that will really minimize that. One that we're looking at now actually is, as you're going north, this kind of insidemost lane would essentially become the outside lane of the left turn. And that would really kind of help shift that traffic over to the west, if you can imagine that. So that if a vehicle is wanting to go into Lincoln or the Legends area, they have fewer lanes of traffic to traverse. With that, we're going to, that chicane that you're kind of talking about, we're looking at how to minimize that or reduce that. So there's less, you know, left turn and then immediate, or sorry, right turn and then immediate back to left turn to kind of get into that Legends area. So we are looking at that. But it's, that's going to kind of be refined as we really define the footprint and how we can really further efficient, create efficiencies in this.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Yeah, no, great. We love those types of comments and you, everybody has a different view of how they drive this corridor. And so we appreciate those just because they, different eyes see, see different things. So it's, it's great. Kind of moving a little bit further north. So again, north is still on the right side of your screen here. We're moving up to the Prater Way intersection. And really between Lincoln and Prater Way, it's pretty much a straight shot. A lot of the widening is actually going to be occurring, well, it's occurring on both sides, but the majority of the footprint increase will be on this eastern side. To talk a little bit more about the intersection itself, the biggest changes that we're currently proposing to this intersection beyond just the three lanes in each direction, which is causing the widening of Sparks Boulevard, are dual left turns from westbound Prater to southbound Sparks Boulevard. We know that there's quite a bit of traffic and it's coming from, you know, both industrial and residential sources. So ensuring that there's sufficient ability to make that left turn is important. It will facilitate the functionality of the intersection, which is an important, you know, obviously to the transportation project. The other big thing that's going to be kind of changing with this intersection is these big pork chops. So this is an older kind of just style of design of transportation, design, infrastructure. I think it works good for when there's no or few pedestrians, but when we get increased pedestrian counts, those just cause pedestrians to have to cross another area. And so we prefer from a transportation safety standpoint than to cross a controlled intersection. So these are all yield control intersection crosses. So the more we can do to kind of facilitate the, the footprint of the intersection to improve safety really then is facilitating that purpose and need of the project. So those are a couple of the changes that we have proposed at this intersection that are beyond just that three lanes in each direction. Moving north, so between Prater and then now we're at Springland O'Callaghan intersection, we get into a different type of demographic of who we're neighboring. In this area, it gets into more residential. We're also, the road splits due to the north Truckee Drain. And that actually proposes a benefit kind of to the project of there's an area for us to widen the road into. And so a lot of the widening, as soon as the road splits, it's actually going in towards the north Truckee Drains. We're really trying to minimize impacts on the perimeter, the sides of the roadway. So in this intersection, we're accommodating three lanes in each direction. This intersection is going to, is proposed to change slightly. So right now there's, if you were going northbound on Sparks Boulevard, you wanted to go to O'Callaghan Drive, you could make your left turn and there's another stop bar kind of in the middle of the intersection between those southbound lanes and the northbound lanes. The current proposal has us eliminating that. So what that causes is for the, excuse me, the intersection to be operation operated as one single intersection. And so we'll be doing timing and all kinds of things to make that function right, the right way. But what it also does is keeping it this kind of layout. If there's ever a concern in the future by either RTC staff or city staff that is not functioning the way it's supposed to, it will allow us to kind of revert. The biggest change here though is, you know, because we're widening towards the drain, there's going to be less of a queue this number of cars that can kind of queue up in this kind of middle area. So that's one change that's occurring here. With that, we really start to care about pedestrian crossings. And so that's another thing that kind of ties into this overall intersection configuration and design is, is making sure that pedestrians can safely cross and get around. And then kind of continuing the furthest north and sorry, this one's kind of zoomed out a lot more than the other ones, but I wanted to kind of capture the, everything that was going on. And so I can zoom in if, if needed. So this is Bering intersection, obviously Reed High School. And so we have the three northbound lanes and three southbound lanes continuing through the intersection. On the southbound side, the third lane starts before you get to the actual intersection. So that if, you know, vehicles are coming in, they can, you know, all three lanes queue up. And then when the light goes green, they can all start kind of at the same time, but helps the efficiency of that intersection. On the northbound side, there was a lot of discussion on where to stop that northbound third lane. Either we could drop it onto Bering Boulevard or continue it through. And with all the volume of traffic being generated from, you know, Spanish Springs and Northern Sparks area, it made sense from the project standpoint to continue it through the intersection. That third lane then drops at Shadow Mountain Park. And there's all a taper lane that kind of facilitates if someone misses that merge to get all the way north. So. And so to kind of talk about the phasing and the timing of the project, as we kind of look through, there's a lot of things that have kind of come together with this. So obviously Sparks, Amber Sosa and her team, we, you know, had a lot of conversations with, with them about the timing of this project, how can we best deliver it to the, the city of Sparks? And there's also another massive project going on in the city of Sparks right now, the Primm Highway widening north of Queen Way. And so these two projects are going to drastically impact those northern, those north-south arterials that really service North Sparks and Spanish Springs community. And so we really need to be mindful of those impacts. And so kind of in the forethinking, the, the planning of these projects, we identified, and sorry, interrupt myself, north is now at the top of the screen. So Reed High School is up here, southeast connector and Greg Street are at the bottom of the map. So again, looking at the timing of the project, the scope of the project and how we could best deliver it, we identified that we could deliver this first kind of phase project, which we're calling Phase One, which is from Greg Street in the south by the southeast connector, all the way up to the westbound ramps. And we can deliver that in the 2022 construction season, so actually next summer. The scope of that project that I kind of went over already is luckily, we don't need to widen any bridges. That's a big cost and time impactful process. We can maintain the shared use path in that area. And really it's going to be restriping and rehabilitating those existing footprint of the road to accommodate three lanes each direction with that segment. We're expecting that construction cost to be five million is probably a little bit more than that just based on material prices and those types of things. But it's in that range of magnitude. The second phase is much more impactful in terms of cost and scope and time. This project is going to go from those westbound ramps all the way up and then north of Reed High School, as I just showed you. That's going to be widening to three lanes, you know, rebuilding the roadway where we, we need to, to achieve a long lasting design life of the roadway. We're going to be maintaining the shared use path. Sparks Boulevard has a great shared use path, especially where, you know, it parallels, actually the whole way, it pretty much parallels the North Truckee Drain. And so we're going to be maintaining that, improving it where there's, where it's insufficient. We're also adding bike lanes in this segment of the project. And it's going to be a 2024, 2025 construction season. We do expect it to be a multi-season project. So we're still at kind of the high level conceptual planning stage of that project, but it is going to be quite a significant undertaking. It's estimated about $60 million. And the, due to the, the scope of work of what we're impacting with this, we're really in close proximity of the North Truckee Drain. We're in close proximity to residential areas. We are anticipating, or we are currently going through an environmental assessment on this project. And that's going to help us really define and mitigate any of the impacts that this project causes. So that also contributes to the timeframe of the project. And then there's a future project that we considered with this, kind of as the Sparks Boulevard overall project, as we've been planning it and working through it. And we're just, we're calling that a future project at this point. And this is going to need to take place in close collaboration with NDOT. It's, it's those interchange improvements over I-80. There's actually three bridges in close proximity to I-80. There's I-80, there's the railroad, and then there's also Clippy Lane here. And so that project, we, it's going to be the interchange, but it's also going to touch kind of lots of different things in this area. It's also proposed to include some multimodal expansion to provide continuity between these phase two improvements and then the southeast connector. And then to kind of cap it off to talk about some of the timing of it. So I did introduce the environmental process that we're currently undertaking. And we've been doing that for quite some time now. So we started that back in the spring of 2018. We're expecting that, we're at a kind of a middle phase of it. We've identified these alternatives. We're now at the stage of really further refining and defining those impacts. And we expect that environmental assessment to really wrap up by spring, summer of 2022. The design of Phase One, the project that I already just. The design of Phase One, the project that I already described, kind of in that southern segment of the Sparks Boulevard corridor limits, we're currently in design of that project. We're expecting to go to construction, as I said, in the 2022 season. And then the second kind of phase of the project that is from the westbound ramps north up to Reed High School. That's kind of actually in currently preliminary design now to help define those limits, to help refine the impacts, to facilitate that environmental process. But the heavy design on that project is really going to start to take place in the 2022 season. And then it'll be wrapped up in the 2023 season with construction then taking place in 2024, 2025. So. That kind of concludes my presentation. I'm more than happy to highlight or talk about any alternative or intersection or anything that we know about currently. We don't definitely have all the answers. We're still in that design phase of the project, but whatever you guys like to hear about, I'm more than happy to help you.
All right.
Answer questions for the council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Hey Jeff, this is Paul Anderson. Actually, I appreciate you giving us this presentation and it runs right through our ward. So I get a lot of questions asked about what's going on, how it's going to play out. So I believe you addressed on one of the slides there, one of the biggest concerns is that they're going to lose their path along the North Truckee Drain. And if I understood correctly, there will be some changes, but they're not going to lose that, that path along the, the drain. Is that correct?
That is 100% correct. That's one of the, the, the purpose and needs of this project is to maintain and improve that path wherever we kind of, either the project touches it or it makes sense to touch it to improve that connectivity. So we are going to be maintaining it.
Perfect. Thank you. And then another question that has come up is, it was actually your very first slide. You had a picture of looking northbound, right at Springland. And the homeowners there in that Springland Village have pointed out that they're the only stretch of houses along that roadway that do not have the, the sound wall. And they're asking if that's going to be included in this project.
Well, we are, I don't have a straight answer for you yet. So as part of our environmental assessment, we do a sound study. And we compare the current levels within the projected levels. And based on that analysis, we determine that a sound wall is warranted or needed. I understand that it's these types of projects and that type of decision, it's not that straightforward. There's a lot of politics and all those types of things that kind of play into it. So we are actively looking at it. And I don't have a straight answer for you now, but we know that it's going to be looked at.
Okay. And then just the last thing, it's actually a comment. Thank you very much for, for your team and interacting with the public on this. I know some of these questions have come to me. I haven't been able to answer them and I've sent them your way. So I've assumed you, you took care of them because I never heard back.
Yeah, we, yeah, I hopefully I've received all the comments and questions. So yeah, please continue to forward them to me. Thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Dare.
Yeah, on the one piece of road, and I forget the name of it, it's the one where they cut across and they kind of have the holding. You said you're going to have less cars on it. That's a little, that seemed like that's going to be an interesting area because even now, right there, it causes a lot of problems because of the amount of cars we can fit on there. And so that would be probably in your whole plan, the only thing that I, I probably had concern with of the functionality of it. And so I'm, I'm way interested in learning more how that's going to end up laying out when you guys are said and done for me.
Yeah, I can kind of maybe try to describe it. So in the current purple, allow cars to pause there. But as it currently, so that a car that wants to make a left turn and go to Springland or go to over to Callahan from either northbound or southbound Sparks Boulevard, they wouldn't, the, the queue length or the, the red time, I guess is the way of describing it, would allow that intersection to flush out. So people would not necessarily get paused or stuck in the middle of it. One thing that we've talked about with City of Sparks staff and Amber and her, her group is, is the functionality of that. That really, not to get too far in the weeds, but that causes the intersection to kind of operate a little bit slower because you got to account for that time for that car to clear, clear out. And so what this plan does is it provides a signal timing expert, a lot of flexibility in how they want to time the signal. And so we could kind of do some clever things based on what, you know, we, we all like to engineer things. We design it to the, you know, nth degree, but reality is reality, right? So we want to make sure that we can design it to its maximum and then give our, you know, signal techs or signal timers, the City of Sparks staff, the ability and work with RTC staff, because we do a lot of signal timing with the City of Sparks, the ability to manipulate it and manage it as it needs to be for the long term.
Well, and that could also really, I, I get what you just said. I didn't catch that the first time. So thank you for re-stating that. But I think that could also help with pedestrians not having vehicles there because that's part of where my concern, I've seen kids on bikes and a few things happen where people are trying to push their way through that as quick as possible. So thank you.
Mayor Lawson, I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
So Jeff, on the, back to the first phase, the I-80 over the bridge there, when you had the turn lanes with your heading west on the I-80 or you're heading, or you come off the freeway heading north and then you're turning onto Lincoln. When you add those three lanes, will you still maintain those turn lanes and add an additional lane? Or are you going to be taking the turn lanes, converting them into your third lane?
So I don't exactly follow what you're asking, but if you're going eastbound on I-80, there's three lanes that turn left to northbound Sparks Boulevard. We're, we're not taking away any turn movements. Everywhere that we're touching, we're either maintaining or we're adding capacity. Does that?
No, it's really, if, if I was heading southbound on Sparks Boulevard.
Okay.
Past the Legends that I'm getting on I-80, there's a dedicated right-hand turn lane. Will that be maintained in addition to three through lanes? And the same going the opposite direction? Right now it has the one, when you, when you're going the opposite direction, there's a dedicated right-hand turn lane right as you get across the freeway. Are you losing those turn lanes or are you adding, you're making sure there are three lanes, both directions and the turn lanes also?
Correct. So going southbound past the Legends to get on I-80. I-80 is going to have its own dedicated right turn lane to get onto the freeway.
Okay.
And then going northbound, currently it's two lanes. And then there's just a, a right turn that goes onto westbound I-80. It'll now be three lanes with a westbound turn that goes on I-80.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. And then are you still taking public comment on this project? I thought I, I saw an email in the last week that the public can go on to the RTC website for the Sparks Boulevard project and still make public comment.
Yeah. So we did go through an environmental process, that EA process that I talked about earlier, has a very formal process that we go through. There was a formal comment process related to the purpose and need that we were receipt, requesting and receiving comments upon. That period has closed, but we are always looking for comments and we'll always take them and, and have conversation with the public.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions? Well, thanks, Jeff. This is a, a much needed project for us. Take some pressure out there. Looking forward to seeing how this shakes out in the next few years, but thank you for coming today.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item 9.3, consideration discussion, possible acceptance of the advice and recommendations provided by the resolution number six from the Sparks Tourism Facility and Revitalization, Revitalization Steering Committee regarding the expenditure of $150,000 in lodging tax proceeds for commissioned artwork in Victorian Square and related art projects. And I, Francine, I had Tony on the schedule, but good to see you, Francine.
Hello. For the record, this is Francine Burge. I'm the special event supervisor for the City of Sparks. And I'm here before you with an agenda item seeking the acceptance of the recommendations provided in resolution six for the Sparks Tourism Facility and Revitalization Steering Committee regarding expenditure of $150,000 in lodging tax proceeds to be used for commissioned artwork in Victorian Square and related art projects. Acceptance of this resolution would enable the city to expend through a separate future action, an award of a contract of 150,000 lodging tax proceeds to commission a unique piece of art for downtown. We have identified a location that we would like to put this commissioned piece of artwork. And it is across from the plaza. And this is directed as, by directed by the Victorian Square Creative Place Making Plan. I think we have a visual. Or do I share that?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Apologize. For some reason I thought the council or the city clerk was sharing that for me, but I have it right here. So this is the proposed location for the commissioned artwork. The reason we chose this location is because it was identified in the creative place, place making plan. It's directly across from the plaza and will complement the work that is going to be done in that area. We also chose this location to be perfect because this, this structure, once it's taken down and a new pedestal is created, it's going to be engineered for 20,000 pounds. The location also has water and power available to it. So it opens up the possibilities for what we can do with artwork in this space. Some other, a temporary piece will be placed there until 2023. Some other smaller projects that we will be using those funds for will include light pole signage, some mural projects and some landscaping. And those will be, the process of those projects will be directed by the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Hi Francine, thank you. I, I love, as we're seeing everything come into fruition eventually with the Art and Culture Committee with downtown is exciting. On this project for the large piece, are you pursuing a, a grant to possibly match what we're, the city will be putting towards this major piece? And if so, what is this? Am I, am I right about that? First of all, and what is the status?
Great question, because the very next I, item on the agenda is requesting permission to apply for an NEA grant.
I'm ahead of myself.
I will be using. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you. And I, and I think that, that, that location, obviously what's there has been there forever, but the potential with lighting, with, with water, if that's possibly what we do, it's a prime location. And just wanted to thank you and, and the whole team with the Art Commission on the work that you guys are doing. Thank you.
Mr. Dare.
Yeah, I, I do think art's very important and I, the only question I have, and it's not even a question, it's more I'm asked for a good explanation just for any of our citizens listening of the tax money that we're using for this is coming from an area that, that is set aside for purposes like this. It's not general fund. I don't know if City Manager Neil Crouch or someone, we just want to make sure it's explained really clear because it's not just general money. We know a lot of different people in our community have some different struggles between businesses and things. We want to make sure people just understand where our spending is to help answer that question. Do you mind a small explanation?
I think staff is certainly capable of answering that question for you. And if need be, we can get Mr. Kronk in the room to hit the details for us.
Thank you.
Sure. This, this money is coming from tax dollars. The committee that has allocated this amount of money, it comes from the lodging tax proceeds, which are designated for facility improvement projects for the downtown area. And artwork falls into that category. So this money could not be spent on staff or what you would usually use general funds for. So it's not taking away from general funds to pay for artwork. And that's a great question. I'm glad it came up.
Thank you. And I, I think we spoke about this before, so I knew the answer. So I was just, that is out loud for the world, the universe to understand. But thank you. I really appreciate that. And congratulations. I know you've been, you've been working on these things for a long time. It's nice seeing things kind of moving and happening and look forward to as things open up, we even see more. Thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Council? Well, I, I got to tell you that everyone I talk to, I tell them to make sure that they go look at that piece of art that's sitting right in front of the Moody Theater. Because I am just high on that thing. It's, it really represents what Sparks is with the family holding up the heart. And I just, I just love that piece of art. So I can't wait to see what the new one brings. And, and obviously this, this is a big deal for us. And yes, this is room tax dollars, which means that you as a citizen of Sparks, unless you're staying at the Nugget, are probably not paying this tax. So we're, we're having our visitors help us pay for our artwork in, in this downtown area. So thank you again. All right. So we're looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right, Ms. Vanderwell?
I move to accept the advice and recommendations provided in resolution number sex, six from the Sparks Tourism Facility and Revitalization Steering Committee regarding the expenditure of $150,000 in lodging tax proceeds for commissioned artwork in Victorian Square and related art projects.
Ms. Bybee?
And I will second that motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you, Francine. And you're going to be here for 9.4. Consideration discussion of possible direction to apply for a national endowment of the arts grant for up to 150,000 to be spent on original commissioned piece of art for the Victorian Square. Francine?
Thank you. For the record, again, Francine Burge, Special Event Supervisor for the City of Sparks. And I'm here requesting permission to apply for a national endowment for the arts grant. It does require a 50/50 match and the goal is to commission a piece of art for downtown. What's nice about having these additional funds from the National Endowment for the Arts is that the additional money can also be used for a public input campaign, which we could not use the, the tax funds to use for that campaign. So the additional funds for the federal government would be able to help us do that. And that's important for creative place making, which is part of our plan. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions from the council? All right, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee?
I'll make this one since I jumped ahead of myself. I'm glad, happy to make it. I move to direct staff to, to apply for a national endowment for the arts grant for up to $150,000 to be spent on an original commissioned piece of art for Victorian Square.
Hey, looking for a second?
I'll second.
Second from Vanderwell, she's just slightly faster than you, Mr. Abbott. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Which carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item 9.5, consideration discussion, possible approval of fiscal year 21, 22 budget recommendations and fiscal items, including one, the city manager's recommendations for the City of Sparks budget. And two, the proposed five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Crouch?
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and members of the city council. For the record, Neil Crouch, your city manager, joined here today by our chief financial officer, Jeff Kronk. We are excited to, to be in front of you today with, with our budget recommendation and, and capital plan and ask for your consideration and, and and direction on it so that we can, we can move on to essentially filling out the state forms and, and, and being set up for the second meeting in May to finish this process. With that said, this, today is the culmination of a lot of work at the staff level and frankly, it's been a lot of work at, at your level. We've, we've met with you in, in retreat a couple of times and, and gone through things with you and spent a great deal of, of time with you, focused on, on our policy-based budget approach. That said, what, the, the few words that I'm going to have to say here this afternoon are really focused on the, the new needs portion of the budget process. And that is by the process by which we as a, a group of departments come together on, on the services we We either want to expand or 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 grow or new services that we want to bring on board. I I assemble that and and bring you a set of recommendations. So what I would like to do now is is share my screen for just a couple of minutes here. And. I hope what you are all seeing now is a PowerPoint presentation.
Now they're seeing it, yes.
Okay, super, super duper. So I'm just going to walk very quickly through the the various new needs. The first pile, if you will, and it's the the larger pile of the two is the general fund new need recommendations. I've got those broken down into into two components. The first are the new positions that I am recommending you add to the complement for fiscal year twenty two. Starting with an additional two emergency communications dispatchers. You will recall that this would be the third part of a three-phase or three-part plan to increase our dispatcher staffing down at Sparks PD. That's coming out of a realization from the Great Recession that we did overcut in that area. And needed to restore the level of service in name of keeping all of our first responders safe when they're when they're in the field in those most stressful of conditions. The second is the addition of two mental health counselor positions into our complement. To allow us to grow the most services that we are providing to our community. And that is where we are having mental health folks ride along with our officers and be able to provide their services on the various calls that we receive. That's that's been a growing component of the of the workload that that we see through our police department. We've had good success with the resources that we share jointly with Washoe County and with the City of Reno. And we want to add that and 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 grow it on our own. The the third component there are three firefighter paramedics that we would like to add to the complement. That is contingent upon our receipt of a safer grant that would pay for the the cost for those three new positions for a three-year period. Something we're excited to to compete in and and hope that we we do achieve. Next up is a risk manager position. That's a a position that was eliminated back in the in the Great Recession. Our purchasing and contracts manager has done a yeoman's job in 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 picking that up and carrying it forward. But certainly, you know, we 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 need additional resources there to to help us deal with the risks that we as a as the local government organization face. Next up is a grants administrator. As we see the the advent of earmarks and federal opportunities come back to us to compete for for federal dollars to bring them back to our city. I believe that this is going to be the first position of what will hopefully be the creation of a successful program that we will we will we will staff up for. As as we see positive results there. And when when I say positive results, I'm what I'm looking for is kind of a return on that investment on the range of, say, ten to one. So if we're going to spend a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars in the next fiscal year, then I'm looking to see, you know, a million two come back into the city as a result of those efforts over time. Next up is a PD Administrator or Police Department Administration Division Manager. That will help us with the efficiency of of the chain of command over at the police department. And then last but not least is an additional Assistant City Attorney Two on the civil side of the house and the city attorney's office. We have seen a near doubling in workload there in the last couple of years as the amount of litigation against the city for our various actions. Has gone has gone way up. We are spending a lot more time preparing for court, getting ready for court and and appearing there in the in the city's defense. So I am I am recommending those those positions be added into the complement. And now we'll get to the to the things, if you will, from the general fund. The top of the list there is a I'm proposing a three million dollar transfer from the general fund into the Capital Projects Fund. To help us, you know, kickstart the the process of constructing a sixth fire station in our city. It's something that that we could we could use right away. We know we we know that it's going to cost us more than three million dollars to to acquire land, construct the station, staff it and equip it. But this will be a this will get us a fair ways down the road towards that goal. Next up, I I it's been recommended that we establish a backup internet connection for the city. Right now, we have a a single internet connection. So another way to say that is we have a single point of failure in this electronic world that we all live in. And as we've gone to more and more system, more and more of our systems being internet and and electronic based. It makes sense to me that we have a backup, you know, so that if something happens to that primary connection, we don't we don't just go out of business. And and feel like it's, you know, nineteen twenty again, that we're able to just switch over to that backup connection. And so I am proposing that we allot fifty thousand dollars in the in the budget for that in this coming year. And then, of course, there will be some ongoing expenses to maintain that over the years. Next up is a a new truck for one of our code enforcement officers. In the Great Recession, we put a number of vehicles that had kind of reached the end of their life in what I'll call the city's boneyard. And then pulled them back out as needed to get some extra life out of them and save ourselves money. We did that with with the truck that we need to replace now. We have literally driven the wheels off of it. So we need to add another vehicle into our complement, so that we're not only acquire this vehicle now. But but start budgeting for its replacement at the end of its life going forward. So I'm asking for for forty thousand dollars there. All told, the general fund impact for the request that I'm making in front of you today add up to four point one million dollars. Next up are the other funds, and that's taking our sewer enterprise funds, our development services enterprise fund and kind of lumping them all together. And I'm asking that you allow us to grow our compliment by three positions there. The first two go together. They would hit our development services fund. And that you will recall are the funds that we take in for processing of development-related activities. Everything from, you know, tentative maps down to building permits. The fees that are paid to the city go to provide those services. We have seen an increase in the amount of work in that portion of our organization, even through COVID. The the development community didn't didn't hiccup for hardly a- a- any time at all. And we're we're just seeing a steady increase in the amount of work that's coming through the front door. So I am proposing that we add the two positions, a a city planner to help us at the upper end of of that service organization. To to keep track of the of what's coming in and make sure that we are getting things done efficiently, effectively, and timely. And then second, a a planning tech, a new position in our city. And this would be somebody who would essentially work at the customer service counter or very close to it. So that they're they are handling those day-to-day type of questions. An example might be, you know, hey, can you help me determine what my side yard setback is so that I can figure out where I can drop a shed? And then they would get the answer, well, if you're it, you know, if you're in any number of our planned developments, you might not be able to have a shed. And if you're not, you know, here's your side yard setback. But to help answer those kinds of questions and and free up other staff to focus on on the entitlements that that go with that that development services workload. And then the last of the three positions is an additional utility locator. We would we would spread those costs across the three sewer funds that we have. You'll recall that's the the sewer fund, so to speak, the drains fund and the and the affluent fund. We are seeing an increase in the requests for utility markings. When when somebody wants to develop something and they need to get in of our right away to hook into things, they call one eight hundred before you dig. We own a whole bunch of utilities and we need to be able to get out there and mark them. This will give us an extra set of hands there. So if you put all those together, it's just a little over four hundred thousand dollars spread across those two groups of funds. With that, that's just a summary of my recommendations on the new needs. And what I will do now is stop sharing my screen and kind of pass the presentation baton across to Mr. Cronk. And he will take it from there.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for the time. Again, it's always a pleasure to come before you. This is always a fun day for me, because we're getting close, right? So I'm also going to share my screen and just have a couple of slides. I promise I'm going to keep my comments short, because this is your time. And I want to make sure that we're covering anything that might be on your mind. Are you currently seeing a presentation in front of you? You are? Okay, great. So a- again, with the presentation up, I can't necessarily see all of you. So if you do have any questions or comments, or you want to stop me for any reason, again, these are going to be short comments. But if you have anything, just, you know, speak up so I can so I can hear you if I since I can't see you necessarily. But I wanted to start with just giving you a a a timeline, if you will, of some of our key dates. Just kind of reminder of where we were and and where we're where we're at right now and how we got here. And then also what's immediately in front of us. And and, you know, this this process starts oh, more than six months ago, way back in October. When we had a staff, pretty much all hands on deck staff budget workshop. And this is where I want to take time just to, you know, kind of say thanks to to, you know, several people in in several groups in particular. But but really, you know, from from my team, you know, this process was started with Stacy Hemmerling, who who had retired, you know, in January. And then Wayne Weber was was, you know, good enough to to pick up that ball midstream and and carry us to the end line. And of course, you know, our our staff also includes Jennifer Parmenter and Jasmine Lozano, who, you know, wi- without their efforts, we can't we can't put this together. But we're sometimes just a facilitator, because I also wanted to say thanks to the departments. This truly is a citywide effort. And 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 it's seen and starting at that at that staff budget workshop that we had in October. And and, you know, we ask a lot of the departments. I know that. And and so this is my opportunity to formally say thanks to everybody who was involved throughout the city. One of the examples is that we we focused on a couple of years ago, we started a process called a zero-based budgeting process. Where we we really spend a lot of effort on on some of our larger discretionary items, things like travel and training. Or professional services, or even just supplies in in and various usage throughout the throughout the departments. Overtime and callback. It's a host of host of areas that we really dive into and and put a microscope to it and try to get as accurate as possible. And and we can't do that in in finance, not nearly to the extent or accuracy that the other departments do. So that's a process that's given us a lot of dividends from the aspect of, you know, it gives us confidence that our budget is accurate. Or at least has a has a a definition. Because what what a zero-based budget process is, if I could succinctly say it is, you basically start your budget with zero dollars. And then we're asking each department to put up to put a a budget dollar to that, but explain what those budget dollars are doing and the purpose of that. So so it's really putting a purpose to every dollar theoretically that you possibly can. You know, we can't do that on on a lot of our larger budgets like our like our. Or our utility budgets and things like that. Those are fixed costs. But on these discretionary costs where we can really get some misses, we found and and started that process several years back. And have expanded that over over several years. So so again, that that's just a an example of a lot of the work that that's done. Going back to our our calendar, that process kind of kicked off a four-month process of just gathering data, talking to the different departments. And and from finance staff, you know, we're looking at the the revenues and trying to coordinate everything. And and that kind of led us to, if you recall, our our budget workshop in February. So that's where we we've put in front of you all the culmination of at least, you know, halfway through the year, saying this is where we think we're going to go for fiscal twenty two. And we need your input. This is where we really get your input on on the the policies. And I'm going to cover those here in a second and and show you kind of where we landed. But really, making sure that we're on the same page. And and those policies have have really helped us out over the last old decade plus, really, ever since we came out of the recession. That's kind of where they got their birth. And we massage those every year. And and that that just means a lot to us, because then that's that's really your leadership coming out. And and we can honestly say this is a council policy-driven budget. And again, that that process has also given us a lot of dividends to to driving the accuracy and 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 where we're at today. So we followed that up with a with a five-year capital or five-year capital improvement plan workshop in March. And then we took the the feedback that we got from you from both the workshop and then the 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 budget workshop and the CIP workshop. And filed the tentative budget, which by law is due on April fifteenth of every year. So so we filed that. It doesn't mean a whole lot for us. We don't use the tentative budget. And the only time we would is if for some reason we can't agree on a final budget. And that's never happened. But, you know, it certainly does come into play sometimes with some of the smaller rural agencies and such. And it really is designed to to help them. But for our purpose, it it's more of a a a legal, you know, checking the box, so to speak. But at the end of the day, the tentative budget, because we put in so much work ahead of that time, the tentative budget is essentially pretty darn close to what the final budget is. With really the exceptions being the the new needs that Neil had listed out to you just just a moment ago. So that brings us to today. So what we're looking for today, as Neil mentioned, are are two things. We're looking for your approval of either the final budget recommendations as we presented in our, and I call it a book. It is a book. It's attached to your agenda item. We call it the city manager's final budget recommendations book. And there's a host of information in there, but that essentially lays out and outlines the the final budget as we would build it, if you so bless it. Alternatively, though, you today is a day to give us alternate direction. This isn't, we're not seeking approval of the final budget. These are just the final budget recommendations. So we're we're seeking either, you know, your blessing or or alternate direction of, you know, where you'd want to go with that. The second thing we're looking for today, of course, is is approval of the CIP. So and and again, that was as it was presented to you in March, at the March meeting. Looking forward, just as a reminder, and this is just to kind of get it on the record, so people are reminded about this. We have a a public hearing that we have to hold by law, by state law, on the tentative budget. And we're going to do that on May twenty fourth. We have to do it sometime within the last two weeks of May. And we choose to do that at the same time, or actually, right before we bring forth to you. The state documents that we're going to get your direction on today and build those state documents. We're going to get that in front of you and ask for your final approval on that final budget. So public hearing first, and then the 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 approval of the final budget right after that. And then just final reminder that that final budget is due to the State Department Taxation by June first. So not to spend a whole lot of time on that, but it's a good thing to kind of get it on the record and and remind us of where we're where we've been. Going forward, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, like I said, that book is extensive. And there's a lot of information on there, but I thought it was, it would be prudent and, you know, beneficial to just kind of let you or remind you where we landed. And again, from last time we met during the budget workshop in February and the CIP workshop in March to now, not a lot has changed. You know, that's that's good news. Sometimes when we gather all that final information from the treasurer's office and the assessor's office. And the Department of Taxation on a host of number of things. We can get some, we can get some changes, but this year, not not so much the case. So I'm kind of pleased to report that, you know, really, the what I'm going to show you today is pretty much what we talked about at the at the workshop. But again, if you have any questions, you know, let me know. So again, I want to just kind of give you a brief update where we landed as a release to our policies. So in the document that you have attached to you and what the fiscal or the fiscal budget for next fiscal year, where we're landing on the recommendations. Is that our policy number one, our ending fund balance would be eight point three percent expenditures. And that's exactly the the direction that you had given. Again, it was it was nice to see once we put everything together, including the final number, the final revenue projections and the new needs and and everything. That we landed right at eight point three percent. Policy two, no change. We're we're expecting to include or we're recommending to include a one million dollar contingency budget. Policy three, if you recall, that is really transferring money from our general fund to the Capital Projects Fund for a host of CIP needs. And that that comes at two point eight million dollars in total, broken down as two point one million dollars for our general CIP needs. Which is about two and a half percent of our revenues as our policy goes. And then another, just under seven hundred thousand dollars for IT needs. And again, this this is no change from what we had presented to you in February. Fiscal policy number four is to commit two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of business license revenue to the stabilization fund. Which is a slight increase of fifty thousand dollars as per your discussion and per your direction that we had in February. In previous years, if you recall, we've been committing up two hundred thousand dollars of our business license revenue to that stabilization fund. To try to slowly build that back from when we had really drained it during the recession. And and we're expecting now, if we don't have to tap into that between now and the end of next year, that we should build up about two, one point three million dollars. Just under one point three million dollars in that fund next year. So again, that that follows our process of slowly building that back up. Fiscal policy number five was that our our general fund personnel cost came right in at our policy at seventy eight point two percent of revenues. For the the recommended budget. And then finally, the the policy number six is that we we continue a pay-as-you-go funding model. For our employee and retirement benefit liabilities. So with that, I'd like to just jump in a little bit, talk to you a little bit about our at a very high level, where we landed at our general fund. And then this is about as, you know, fifty thousand foot level as you can get. So our total sources, which is all the income coming in, if you will, is eighty five point three million. And this is just for the general fund, as a reminder. And that constitutes revenues of eighty four point three million, which is just a slight increase over what we expect to see in fiscal twenty one to end this year in fiscal twenty one. And then, of course, the transfer in of a million dollars, which is equal and tied to the contingency budget, per the discussion we we had on on policy number two. So total sources of eighty five point three million, total uses out of the general fund of ninety five point three million. So a net spend down of our of our ending fund balance of a ti- of ten million dollars. But that constitutes of our ongoing expenditures, our departmental expenditures, if you want to call it that, of eighty four point eight million. So if you just look at that line item and compare that, if you will, to the to the the item just above it, when we're talking about the ongoing revenues. You'll see those numbers are awfully close. So revenues of eighty four point three million versus expenditures of eighty four point eight million. So it's essentially a, you know, pretty much balanced budget and a flat budget, because we're expecting expenditures, ongoing expenditures only increase about two point four percent. And that pretty much matches the the revenue increase of three percent. So that, you know, that was that was done in intensely and trying to present to you a a relatively flat budget. So that, you know, that was, that was done, uh, in- intentionally and trying to present to you, uh, uh, a relatively flat budget. Um, you know, really understanding or acknowledging that we still have a lot of uncertainty that we're dealing with. Uh, you know, as we're coming out of this, uh, recent, uh, you know, crisis that we're dealing with. So, um, also uses is the contingency budget that falls under that category. And then our transfers out, uh, that I laid out in detail in, uh, in the staff report of nine and a half million dollars. That leads us with our ending fund balance of seven point one million dollars in the budget, which again, comes up to eight point three percent of expenditures. So that's the general fund, but we can't forget, uh, there are a whole host of other funds that we manage. And I just wanted to put this in front of you just as a, as a, hmm, just as a summary, a reminder. That, you know, there's a lot of restricted activities that the city does that falls outside of the general fund. And, you know, our, our primary discussions are always on the general fund and rightly so. Because that's where, that's where a lot of discretionary activities happen. A lot of the funds that you're seeing here, um, are restricted in nature, uh, both, both the source and the use of it. But it's good to remember that, uh, you know, we're, we're not that small of a city anymore. Um, you know, and, and we have thirty-two other funds, um, in addition to the general fund, that total just over a hundred and fifty-one million dollars. Uh, so if you combine that with the general fund, you're, you're looking at a total overall entity-wide, uh, you know, budget of about two hundred and thirty-six million dollars. So it's, 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 you know, quite large. Um, but these, these other funds, uh, again, there's thirty-two of them. Uh, we've got special revenue funds, capital projects funds, uh, debt service funds, enterprise funds, internal service funds. And of course, uh, what we'll talk about at the redevelopment agency, we've got four different, uh, redevelopment agency funds. So these are items that your staff tracks, uh, you know, in our, in our financial system on a daily basis. Um, just thousands and thousands of lines of data, uh, go through these different funds. Um, and, uh, you know, i- it's all broken out for you in that book. And that's, uh, one of the things that I'm most proud of, of the city manager's final budget recommendations book that we published. It's one of the best reference tools, um, that I think that we, that we produce, especially in the finance department. Uh, because it's, it's designed to talk i- in just everyday, we're real world, you know, language. Uh, everyday language of what these funds do and, and, uh, you know, what, what drives them and what sources come into them and how they're restricted and what activities are involved. So, um, I, I would highly recommend to the, the millions of people who are tuning into this, uh, broadcast. Um, if you are ever interested in how the city of Sparks runs, I would highly recommend, um, the one document, if I could point you to anything, would be this. City manager's, uh, final recommendations book. It's, uh, it's, uh, something again, um, I and our staff are quite proud of. And, um, I, I just hope it's a useful tool for, for, you know, whoever might be interested, all our stakeholders. Uh, with that, I just, uh, wanted to finish my thoughts with some final thoughts on, uh, uh, maybe what's not in the budget. And, and sometimes that's just as important in this crazy world that, uh, we're living in right now. Um, specifically the, uh, the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, or ARB or ARBA, it's, uh, called a different, a couple of different things. Uh, we are expecting, um, about a seventeen million dollar allocation from that, that was signed into law on March, uh, eleventh of this year. Uh, the, uh, the, the law actually allows the federal treasury department to provide guidance, uh, within sixty days. And, and we have, we're still within that sixty-day time limit and we haven't heard anything yet. So, uh, we, we expect the dollars, we're an entitlement city, so we're expecting the, the seventeen million dollars. Uh, but again, that has not been finalized, nor has the, um, the instructions or the guidance, if you will, from the treasury department as to what we can spend that money on. So until we, we, you know, have, uh, that nailed down, it really doesn't make any sense to add it into the fiscal twenty-two budget. So, uh, for that, we'll also, uh, treat it just like we would any other grant, uh, for that matter. Um, in that, when the funds do come in, uh, you know, this will give us time to, to sit down and, and be strategic about how we want to, how we want to spend it. And then we can, from a, a legal compliance stand, uh, perspective, we can, um, augment the budget as we would any other grant. So for that reason, you know, uh, you're not going to see anything in the final budget, but, uh, it will certainly be an impactful. Um, you, uh, you know, source for us next year as we go forward. So, but again, more, more, more to come on that, um, as soon as, uh, could be coming any day or, or, you know, no later than, uh, May eleventh is, uh, is what we're told. So with that, those are, those are, uh, my thoughts. Um, if, unless you have any, uh, comments, again, just as a reminder. Um, we're seeking two things from you today, uh, really just a, an approval, either as is. Um, uh, as we, uh, presented in the, in the city manager's final recommendations book. Um, approval of that direction or alternate direction. Um, again, this isn't the final budget, what we'll do is we'll come back to you in the second meeting of May. And give you that, uh, that, that's, that truly is going to be the final one. So this is kind of your, your final bite at the apple, if you will. Um, you know, and then, and then we'll go for, go take this information, this direction that you give us today. Go build those final budget, uh, state, uh, forms, the, the, the actual form, uh, uh, per the state, uh, requirements. And then bring it back to you and, and finalize it from there. Um, so with that, that's the conclusion of my remarks, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Mr. Dare.
I had one question on the, on the, uh, employee that we looked at, it's hot, getting hired for utility sewage sewer area. Usually we share that with Reno, anything that's kind of going on that, is that our own hire that only works for us under a different?
That, that, that is our own hire that would just work for the city of Sparks and be paid for out of our sewer funds.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's clear. Thank you, and I just thank you for all you do and taking the time to make sure we kind of understand it. I'm excited about, um, what this, how this year ended out, I'm amazed and, uh, a little, a little confused. I know how we started and all the, uh, it, it did not think we were going to end up here. So, uh, very excited that we are and definitely looking forward to seeing our city open up and businesses thrive and things start happening. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think last year at this time, it was sheer terror that we were. Hey, see, the other questions from the council? Well, oh, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, actually, uh, not a question, but just a comment. Um, I, I know I've said this a few times before, but Jeff and, and all of the staff, I, I truly appreciate the. I can't even imagine how much time is spent, um, putting together the, the budget, preparing it. And likewise, I, I appreciate that you guys are listening, listening to our concerns, our thoughts and, and where we go. So I just want to say thank you, we, we truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson, those are kind words.
Anyone else? This Bobby.
Um, I would like to echo the same sentiment and, uh, just, just repeat or kind of reinforce my confidence. Uh, in our team, but Jeff, with you and the whole financial, uh, team, uh, this year with, with the pandemic. With money that we received from the CARES Act, with not sure what the guidance would be. And there were a lot of restrictions, um, that the federal government wasn't very, you know, quick to get to us. Or the state was to get to us and a lot of uncertainty. And yet I had the utmost confidence that we were going to do what we should do. And that the allocations we made would be in compliance, because I know how so thorough you and the staff is. So that confidence that you, uh, give us on a daily basis, but during this pandemic, when things were just such. In flux, just like the American Rescue Plan money, uh, I just know that when we do get that money. That I have no doubt the city of Sparks will spend it as is appropriate. Uh, because the last thing any community wants is for a federal audit to come back and, uh, show that you were not using the funds as intended. And, and I just want to thank you for, for your work and for your, um, the proficiency of both yourself and your staff. Uh, in giving me and I think the rest of council and the mayor, the confidence in the work that you do. I don't, I don't worry about it. So thank you.
Oh, thank you very much, uh, yeah, it was an exhausting year for everybody in a lot of ways, right? So expressing your confidence, that, that means a lot to me, thank you very much.
All right, anyone else from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Vanderwell.
I'd like to, I, well, of course, echo, I probably can't add very much, but this being my first budget season, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Cronk and everyone else in your department. For just all the clear and transparent information. Um, it's been as large as it is, it has been easy to learn. So I appreciate all you guys' hard work.
Thank you.
Yep, Mr. Dare.
One more thing to share and then I, if you'd like, I can make a motion. I, I was actually presenting and talking about our finances at a meeting just the other day. And it came up and us being able to share that we were going down to a zero-based bu- budget and the things that we do. Uh, that's changed the atmosphere in the room, a bit of the conversation. And so how we do what we did, I think I got to explain it well enough that everyone at least kind of understood it. I'm sure I did not do as good a job as you, um, but I did explain it enough that I, it really, it was, it was, it was great being able to share that. So it's not just us to appreciate it, but I, I know what citizens do. But if you'd like, sir, I can make a motion if you'd like.
Well, I'm going to make one comment first and then, uh, and then I'll let you. But i- it's being here for as long as I have now. And when I first got on the council, we were still going down in budget and I think we got as low as the low forty million. And now here we are, you know, ten years later and we're eighty-three million, and this is just general fund. It's, uh, this is in, but it, you've done a great job every single year, Jeff, in this entire time. I'm, I can't tell you how impressive it is that through all the thick and thin and, and all the ups and downs and everything else. That you are so tight on this budget, I mean, within a half a percent, am I right? Almost every single year.
We've gotten a lot better, thank you.
That, that is incredible, if you really think about it, I don't think anybody could be that accurate. And you do it year in and year out, so that, for me, big kudos for the, the wonderful job that you do and your staff. That it's, it's truly amazing to me, I have a hard time balancing my checkbook, so. This is, this is amazing that you can take, you know, two hundred and thirty million dollars and make it all work out and, and be within a half percent on your predictions. So awesome.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson, appreciate it.
There, go right ahead, or did you have something, Donald?
Yeah, just real quick, um, I, I'll agree with everyone, I mean, already said something, but especially with Christopher. With how, how simple you make this, Jeff, you know, it's the number world, it can get really confusing, especially for us that are already, we're kind of in this, but for the public, it's a whole nother world. And I think for all of us, we're able to actually kind of explain where our budget is. We have these, you know, these pretty documents where we can show you the highlights and we can get into the weeds, but we can show you the highlights and, you know. It, it's, it's awesome transparency, so definitely a good job, your team and yourself and all I got, I'll see you at the town, good for.
Thank you.
Oh.
Go ahead, Christopher.
Well, there's two, two of them, I'll do the first one, if someone else wants the other one, or if you want me to do it. So the first motion is I move to approve the proposed five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two through fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, looking for a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Anderson with a second, any further discussion? And then the, I was remiss in leaving Neil out of this, because obviously Neil, you had a well-thought-out addition to the budget too and that personnel. I thought for a long time we've needed a, a grant writer and we have one now, and I think that's a, that's going to pay off in spades for us in, for the long-term future. So thank you for that, that well-thought-out, uh, budget also.
Thank, thank you very much, Mayor Lawson, uh, I appreciate your, your words. Uh, and, uh, I'm fortunate enough to be surrounded by a whole bunch of people who are a lot smarter than I am, that keep me on the straight and narrow.
That's, that's absolutely my philosophy. All right, I got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, most carries unanimously, okay, we have another motion?
A- actually, before we go to a mo- motion, I just wanted to make a comment on the, the second portion here, which is the, the city manager's final budget. Uh, recommendations, but I just wanted to say, um, Neil, thank you so very much for the way you did this with staff. As well as the information you presented to us on council. You really, I believe, stretched your employees to think beyond where they are now. Uh, looking at worst case, which we pretty much were looking at last year. Um, but also looking at if we were able to help them more and, and fund them better, uh, what things can they do for our community? And to me, um, it really was enlightening and I, I just want to say thanks. That, I think that's the, the kind of direction that we need our leadership to be heading and thinking if things are bad. Where, where are we going to have to make changes? If things are great and we can, we can add to your budget, what wonderful things can we do for our community? And I just want to say thank you, I, I thought that was, uh, a tremendous exercise that, that you, uh, put upon them and likewise shared with us, so thank you. Thank you, council member, appreciate it.
Mr. Dare.
I have one point of discussion to you, I just want to say, fire station, thank you, yay! Yay, I think, yes, I'm going to have to find something else to say over and over and over again, because it's moving forward, but, uh, fantastic.
Well, you could jump on the bandwagon with me on another subject, but Neil already knows what I'm going to say. But I, I'm not going to say that to him, because, uh, just, well done. All right, so I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right, go ahead.
I move to approve the city manager's final budget recommendations for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, I got a second by Ms. Bobby, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, most carries unanimously, good job, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it.
And staff and staff, everybody, this is a team effort, we know that for sure. All right, item ten, we have no, no action, uh, eleven, we have nothing, we're, that brings us to item twelve point one, comments from the public. Madam clerk, do we have any public comment?
If anybody's.
There you go.
Wishing to provide public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app. And we do have, it looks like a couple of public comments, Mr. Mayor. So our first public comment is going to be from Elise Weatherly. Elise, please unmute your line and begin speaking after you state your name. Elise, are you able to hear me? I wonder if.
Can you tell, tell her how to unmute?
She's, she's unmuted, yeah.
Elise, I'm going to come back to you, I'm going to open up the telephone number, um, if that's possible, but that could also be her.
Right.
The next public comment would be from telephone number seven-seven-five-seven-seven-zero-four-two-zero-six. Please state your name for the record and unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Can you hear me now? Okay, all right, it's starting to feed back a little bit, but I'll try not to let that stop me. So all I have to say is I want to say thank you to you guys for keeping the agenda items at a reasonable amount. I have attended the school board meetings and they are extremely, um. Lengthy, yeah, this is very difficult for me to talk, because I keep hearing myself. Anyway, I have a lot to say, I have a lot of background, I will probably save it for the next time we can meet face-to-face. But what I will say is that, um, in the city of Sparks, you have the best sound engineer in the universe. And he accepts my music and he likes it and he listens to it. The next song that's going to come out is going to be called "The Truth, The Truth, And A Lie Is A Lie." It doesn't matter if it's positive or negative, the truth is the truth regardless of how it's put. Uh, Jeff Cronk, uh, said you guys are facilitators. Uh, I'm a me, I'm a conduit, my uncle's name is Roger Cronk, by the way. I am the king's conduit and he's very strict in what is right and what is wrong. I've had a lot of experience in the past with the city of Reno, with Washoe County. I played for the secret witness program where, um, uh, Mark Klaus was the speaker. His daughter was twelve-year-old Polly Klaus, who was murdered by Richard Allen Davis. I had to play a song behind that. What I learned behind that is that somebody might say that you're, that you're, they're your friend and they're on your side, but they're not. Their actions and their beliefs make a difference. I will not be a popular item in this community, because what I have learned is that it's not positive or negative. If something's true, it's true, that applies to programming, accounting, payroll and even music. I have been here for over forty years, I have never been fired, I have never been chastised, I've never been reprimanded. And what I'm going to do is tell the truth for the rest of my life in this state. I don't want to live in this state anymore, I've seen so much corruption, I've seen so much double standards. We've got fiduciary responsibilities that the state of Nevada mandates, and yet the state themselves are not doing it. They have high, they have a community, I'm sorry, common community. They have high, they have a community, I'm sorry, common communities, where they have laws and rules and regulations, but when you find corruption, there's no way to report it. I reported Judge Chris Wilson to the state of Nevada, because he found in favor of Excel Christian School, even though I caught them in a lie. The state did nothing. I turned in Dr. Donald Faramon for misdiagnosing me, the state of Nevada did nothing. All I'm saying is, is everybody just goes around and says everything is good, it's not. Is that my time?
You have twenty.
Twenty-three seconds, twenty-three seconds, okay, so I do wanna say thank you, I'm so grateful for my constitutional rights, where I can hold up a sign in front of somebody. To tell other people what's going on with this business, don't go with this business, find a different business, because believe it or not, even the businesses have scammers in them. They're called wolves in sheep's clothing, and they're also called goats.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any other public comment?
I'm not showing any additional public comment at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then we'll move on to twelve point two, comments from the mayor, city council, and city manager. Do you have any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to find out how I could request that we do a proposed ordinance to require registration and regulation of lobbyists in the city of Sparks.
Okay, that's probably a discussion we should have with the city manager and myself.
Okay.
Okay, and then we can bring it back. All right, anyone else? Mr. Dare.
Yes, I wanna invite anybody interested, there's an ALS walk, drive kind of thing happening at Reno High School, one of the, one of the boards I sit on. And it's a statewide thing, and if you know what ALS, it's Lou Gehrig's disease, and it's helped raise money for families and people who have found themselves with this horrible disease. Most people who have this do not live very long, two or three years sometimes at max, and it's a very, very difficult time. And so it's an awesome thing to come around, but it's this Saturday coming up, and you, it's from eleven to one o'clock. And so if you wanted to come out, I'll be there, and we have a proclamation from us that we'll be sharing, and it's just an awesome time. But it's always good to stand with others, especially those who walk through the most difficult stuff, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, any other comments from this council? Seeing none? Last chance. Okay, we're moving on to my favorite agenda item, number thirteen, adjournment, thank you, everybody. Hang on, though, we got, Miss Bobby's got another meeting to conduct. Oh, don't we have?
Yes, we do, we have a redevelopment agency meeting, yes.
I apologize. We do.
You look like a deer in headlights there.
I, I don't know what date I think it is, we are the second meeting of the month. And I'm gonna ask Clerk to call the meeting of the redevelopment agency of Monday, April twenty-sixth to order. And I've gotta pull up my agenda while you're doing that, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Chairperson Bobby.
Here.
Agency members Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Acting Chief Legal Officer Duncan.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Croods.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I'm getting my agenda right now. You think I was brand new to this, you know? Item number three, public comment, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment items?
If anybody would like to participate in public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app. And I'm showing none, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I'll move on to item four, agenda, approval of the agenda, looking for a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Okay, agency member Lawson, I have a motion to approve today's agenda, was the second from agency member Dare. Yes, okay, I have a motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, item five, five point one, consideration discussion and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks redevelopment agency meeting of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Do I have corrections, additions, or a motion to approve?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes of the Sparks redevelopment agency meeting of March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, I have a motion by agency member Vanderwell, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by agency member Anderson, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye.
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 Aye, anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously, item six, six point one, consideration and possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills approved for payment. And appropriation transfers to the period of March fourth, twenty twenty-one through April seventh, twenty twenty-one, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have motion approved by agency member Dare, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion to second by agency member Abbott, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion, excuse me, anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously, item six point two, consideration discussion, possible approval of the chief administrative officer's final budget recommendations. For the city of Sparks redevelopment agencies areas one and two for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. I guess that would be an important thing not to miss today, huh? Sorry, guys, I said I'm just jumping ahead of myself today. Let me see, will that be Mr. Croods, Mr. Kurtz, and Mr. Cronk, Mr. Cronk, are you starting, or Mr. Croods?
It, it will be the, it will be Mr. Cronk making our presentation for this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and, and agency members, for the record, again, this is Jeff Cronk, I am your chief financial officer. I'm gonna keep my comments very brief, because this is the companion item of the, of what we had just presented to the, at the city meeting. The dates are all the same, so, you know, again, what we're, what we're seeking today is approval of the city manager's final budget recommendations for fiscal twenty-two, for the regional area. Our agency areas one and two. Happy to report, actually, there, there's no material difference between what we had reported to you, or presented to you in, at the workshop and the CIP workshop. With one addition, or one slight change, where we moved the timing of the straightening of the Avenue, Avenue of the Oaks. We were gonna spend a million dollars on that, originally that was planned to happen in fiscal twenty-one, but for timing purposes, that had to be moved to fiscal twenty-two. So again, nothing new on the order of the, the project or what, what's actually happening out there, it's just a matter of timing. And that actually is the only difference between what we presented to you at, at the February and March workshops, or at least only material difference, and then what we're presenting now. So that, that is the extent of my comments. Again, the same timeline is applicable to the agency as it is to the city, in that we're gonna bring back to you. Should you approve the, the city manager's recommendations as they stand today or alternate direction, we're gonna bring that back to you on the state documents on May twenty-fourth. And at the same time, just to get it on the record for everybody, that on May twenty-fourth, we'll hold a public hearing on the tentative budget, which again, was filed along with the cities on April twenty, or April fifteenth. Just this, this, a couple of weeks ago. So with that, that is the conclusion of my remarks, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Hey, does anyone have any questions on our fi- final budget recommendations? Mr. Duncan, did you have a comment?
No, Chairwoman.
Okay, I saw you unmuted, any questions from the council or the mayor? Nope, okay, if I see no questions, I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve the chief administrative officer's final budget recommendations for the city of Sparks redevelopment agency areas one and two for fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I have a motion by agency member Vanderwell, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by agency member Dare, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Cronk.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, so we are at item seven, seven point one, comments from the public. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public at this time?
If anybody wishes to provide public comment at this time, please press star nine from your telephone or use the raise your hand feature on your Zoom app. And I'm showing none, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, item seven point two, comments from the agency and chief administrative officer, any comments? Okay, seeing none, I will go to my favorite item on the agenda, adjournment, call for an adjournment of this redevelopment agency meeting, thank you all. Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks.